I'd like to call order the Tuesday, January 21st meeting of Monmouth City Council and ask Willis to call the roll.
Counselor Carey is excused, Counselor Coons here, Counselor Meyer.
Here.
Counselor Milligan.
Here.
Counselor Schaefer.
Here.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Oberst.
Yes, all rise for the fight salute please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have three, well really four pieces of things tonight, and that is, in addition to council meeting, we have an urban renewal agency meeting and a work session that includes an executive session on reviewing public employees. And so I'm going to do it in that order, and we'll have the council meeting, and then we'll jump straight into the urban renewal agency before we move over to the work session. So just a quick rundown of county contractions. And the first item on the regular council meeting agenda is the consent calendar, which consists of the minutes from the council meeting of January 7th and the work session from the same evening. I can have a motion to approve. Move approval of both?
Second.
I'll give it to Jesse.
All right.
Movement as a dead tie. Movement seconded in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll adopt those two sets of minutes. Mayor's report, I attended, I was asked not long ago, it was a while ago, I guess now, to serve on the Transportation Options Advisory Committee at ODOT. This is a body, we have a new sort of branch of the transportation plan in Oregon around transportation options, and meaning, how do you get from point A to point B, and what are all the different ways you might do that, and what can we do to help people choose amongst the options that are available to them, and what can we do to improve on those options? And so, an advisory committee was created to help craft the documents that will fit this new piece of transportation plan in place. And because of my involvement in the Transportation Enhancement Advisory Committee, I was asked to serve on this thing as well. So I attended that today, and we're slowly but surely cranking through the creation of documents around that, and hope to have it done by late this year. I'll keep you posted as things come along with that. The only other item I have for you, I'm hoping that folks are getting an opportunity to check in on WIMPAG, and the continued improvement on the stuff that is being put on our three channels on MINEnet. Rod Killen, in addition to those productions that he's created, is also starting to work with folks in the community. He's pointed out that there are miles of video footage in this community, with everybody having cellphone cameras and tablet cameras and so on, that given a little assistance could be dropped to a computer and edited and actually put on. So he's started to offer training for how to do that. He's also noted that, I mean, one of the members of the WIMPAG advisory, or WIMPAG Board of Directors, has a large, a big screen television and no cable service of any kind, because everything he watches comes in on the internet, from YouTube and various other content delivery services. And that's a direction that a lot of people are headed, just like people are dropping landlines, they're also shifting to internet-based television. So Rod has set up a YouTube channel for WIMPAG now, and we're also looking at, he's got a Facebook page up for WIMPAG where you can go and check out schedules for the three MINEnet camps. So if you haven't looked in on WIMPAG lately, I would urge you to do so, that would be channel 17, 18, and 99 on MINEnet. And we'll continue forward from where we are there.
Can I add to that?
Yes.
I was actually part of the first training, video training for WIMPAG, they partnered with the YMCA, and they are working with the YMCA because apparently youth sports and youth activities is a TV gold, according to MINEnet, and so we were like, awesome, we'll take a Pac-10 channel, just like we'll be a Y-channel, but no. We've got to start small, so we've got to start training, or we trained a couple staff, including myself, and then the idea is to train volunteers, the idea is to get community members to be able to put content, or get content to Rod and the WIMPAG board or group to not have to spend any time editing, and they just instantly put it up, because that's a big piece, and then I spent, I've spent quite a bit of time lately watching the WIMPAG channel on YouTube, actually, so I'm excited.
Okay. Turning to reports from council reps to boards and commissions and council reports. Tell me about the log read order.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I wish that people watching on the YouTube channel could hear the report that we're going to hear later on from our library advisory board, but I, they have a lot of amazing things that have happened throughout the year, but I'll just talk briefly about our meeting of January 8th. The library board was in discussion with our library director about upcoming needs to be considered as we enter budget season. So knowing that we have a budget workshop coming up, we kind of discussed what are some of the things that we see with a new director, maybe a new direction in library work, what are some of those considerations we want to get into the city budget? So we kind of talked about that. And also, really looking forward to a, our major program, looking at expanding adult programming, and so we have discussed with the city manager, changing city policy to perhaps allow alcohol to be served on city property, and if that gets worked out in time, to have the wine and poetry tasting event that has been scheduled for March 15th at the library, and we'll hear more about that, but it would be a lovely evening, perhaps music and poets reading poetry, discussions of poetry, so a lovely evening at the library.
In the meeting room versus the actual library?
I don't know about that. That could well happen all over the library, Ben, Mayor. We want people to be in the library, right? So why wouldn't you have things in the wraps, in the stuff?
That's the clarification.
It's going to be a fun event, you're going to want to be there. So that's my report.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Schaefer.
Mayor and council, I apologize, I was not able to make it to the meeting on the 15th, so I don't have anything to report.
Counselor Milligan.
Sure, Parks and Rec, their last meeting, a few things are updated. Madrona Park Walking Trail and Arboretum, the 420,000 grant is funded and secure, construction schedule is to start in June of 2014. I believe that there'll be a groundbreaking at that time, and then completion should be somewhere around November on that. Main Street Park Amphitheater, quite a bit has happened on that since I last updated you. Another concept, I think I told you, E has gone through another revision, and currently that revision is the one that the Parks and Rec Board prefers. They had another meeting to look at some things, and then on January 17th, the project oversight team met with the design team and the sound and light techs to discuss more technical issues. And then on February 12th, there's going to be a review of the detailed designs, landscaping, and costs by the Parks and Rec Board and the project oversight team, and then possibly there'll be a recommendation come out of that to the council. And if there is a recommendation, it should be before us at a council meeting in March. And let's see, what else is there? I think those are the two significant things that came out of that meeting.
Did, you said Plan E, you correct?
Yes.
Are we still somewhere similar to what we was voting on by the community, or have we veered away from that quite a ways?
We have not veered away from that quite a ways. We have adapted a lot of what was said, because there was no clear outstanding direction, but there were enough directions that parts of B and D have been incorporated into E, and then from there, some revisions, so.
So we're on E sub 1 right now, or E sub 2?
Yeah, E, yeah, something like that.
And E is basically a hybrid of two of the previous.
Correct, yeah. And not all that different, but the next time it comes before the Parks and Rec Board, there'll be more details about construction materials, and costs, and lighting, and landscaping, and a lot more details that we haven't seen yet. And then that, like I said, if they feel that that's adequate for us, then they'll make a recommendation to bring us to us in March.
Cool. Okay. Are there any community announcements? And here in that, I'll turn to the city manager.
Thank you. Wanted to put your attention to the 2013 annual report. I just wanted to highlight some of the items, and then overall, you can see, once again, this is a high-performing organization. We're delivering great core services, we're continually improving operations and completing some big projects. We're moving the community forward and doing a good job. And the police section, obviously the big one there is the Bon Maddy passing for a police station. That'll be the agenda, I need a bit later talking about, you know, some contracting methods on that. They also, for the first time in a long time, actually got LOCC cooperation. We had a troubled facility in town with alcohol issues, and actually got their cooperation, really actively worked with them, and made some progress there. A really nice one, we have the presentation a few weeks ago on the E citation program, actually acquired a grant for that, and got that going, and we're looking forward when we can get that integrated with the court system. If you go to the next page, Power and Life, first one out there is that we have energy conservation efforts, and with the kilowatts we've saved with what we're doing, I think a neat figure there, because we've actually saved enough electricity to power 12 homes. And so we're not talking just nibbling a little bit, and we're making substantial improvements and really having some savings. Next one's going to do similar in a different angle, is the LED streetlights. We're up in the Ash Creek area, and then we can start moving that out and through the rest of town, that'll also have some nice savings. And then the cable replacements, one thing that happens in a lot of cities is sometimes you wait until you have to fix something, and we just continually replace cables and do undergirding projects. We just got on, continues to, we just build that into the budget in the process, so we just continue to do that. Under finance, got the audit done on time, and it looked really good. Debit and credit cards are being accepted at City Hall, and we're pretty close to online payments, we've got some work done there. Mark's done a really good job restructuring the whole utility section, the website, you can go to different information, here's how you can pay, payment options, really boosted that, so it's really user-friendly. And so, once we get a couple, a couple of details lined up, we'll be rolling on the online payments, too. If you go to the next page, municipal court, I'd hope to say by now we're going to be converted to a new software, but sometimes things don't go the way we expect them to. The data that we're dealing with is so bad and odd, they can't get it to convey to the new system. Even with all the experts involved, they can't figure out how to get it. They're going to take one more shot at it away, or what happens is some of the files don't line up with the case, and so what we might have to do is basically put a dummy code on them, so then we can go back later and say, okay, that's a bad file, then we'll go do the research and we'll get the right information, then insert it into the system. But, you know, you just see over and over, you know, the state having problems with, you know, software projects, city department has it. Computer stuff's really difficult, you know, and it's not as easy as people would think. Oh, we'll just do a new software and just install. Doesn't really work that way. Continued on library, lots of shifts there, we had a new library director, and obviously had the backfill of the new children's library in. And it's kind of more of a continuous one there, when we talk about the collections being shifted, as some libraries are just doing, it just continues to adapt. You know, there's changes in users, electronics, how people acquire information, and they're staying on top of that and staying ahead of it. And in community development, quite a few, have a historic resources inventory updated, have 57 structures. Onto the following page, as Steve just mentioned, we had a $420,000 grant from Madrona Park, that's going to be a huge project next year, and then work on the amphitheater design. And we had the housing inventory and housing needs assessment completed, now that's a base for, headed toward looking at our land needs, you know, urban ground foundry expansion, a couple areas there, so that was a big project to get that done. Under the senior center, the Woo Students, actually a nice one there, 3,331 hours, just helping people, and they're still loaded on that. It's an interesting one, when you go across the scale, you look at how many volunteers really we are engaging. The senior center has all the students helping, volunteers help out the project, the library has their cord with the volunteers, we got tons of people coming to us with projects in the park area, so we're working with them, let alone our kind of regular work with, you know, business associations and other folks. And then also, big ones, the building expansion you guys just talked about, was moving forward in that, doing a scaled-down project that's doable, and then would be hit with Grand Street on that pretty soon. And the building department, you know, a little bit quiet, always have your routine things, but the university's always nice enough to give Larry something to work on, so we did some work there on a couple projects. And then a big one, kind of last one there on the next page, was the Complete Electrical Certification. When they originally put this program together, it was essentially impossible for a non-journeyman electrician to pass the test, and Larry kept working hard at it, they also did some adjustments to the program, and so he is now able to, you can do actually all your needs, without even these contractors, so that will actually keep things going real well, nice efficiency there. Public Works, that's obviously the visible stuff, our Splash Play Fountain, which has been way more successful than we could have thought it would have been. Getting the dog park constructed, having a grand opening in the next 15 degrees is always fun. And then the working the volunteer groups, wanted to point that out with you, we got people of different parks doing projects, let alone your normal tree planting. Down toward the bottom with parking, we had a parking discussion, and we generated, see a bunch of parking spaces around town, trying to loosen things up a little bit, I think that was a big work on that one. And the last page, just to note, was the overlay project on Main Street, so I got the second half of the Main Street project done. So overall, I think it's a great list, and as I said before, I'll stack that up in a few years, or you can dig with that.
Very good, Scott, thanks. Any questions, council? Looks good. Okay. Citizens comment time. Any who want to have any comments for anything that aren't otherwise on the agenda? Yes. Come on up, and your name and city for the record, please.
All right. Well, my name is Rose Dorn, and I have just recently moved here on November 1st from Washington State. I really am loving it and enjoying it here. I love the small-town feel that we have, and just what little I've heard, it sounds like Monmouth is a nice place to be. This is probably far from anybody's thought and agenda, what I'm going to speak on, but it's something that's very near and dear to my heart, and that is water fluoridation. Fluoride is an absolute toxic waste, and how do we get it in our water? And why do we have it in our water? It has so many health effects, from the destruction of every organ in our body, our brains, our hearts, our kidneys. They've done many tests, many researchers on, one area they did where they had 10 cities that were un-fluoridated and 10 that were fluoridated, and over a 17-year period, the death rate in the fluoridated cities went up 10 percent. Now, there's no reason why we should have fluoride in our water, and I would really love if all of you would help me to get the fluoride out of our water. I just moved here, I came from an area that was un-fluoridated, which I loved. Just in the short time I've been here, I really feel it in my skin, the dryness, in my hair, everything, and it just doesn't make sense. And my question is, we have, I mean, why, how much money do we spend on fluoridating this water? Does anybody know? You're talking budget, you're saying, where can we get money for this, and this, and this? Well, we need to spend money on something that is a good thing, not something that is a detriment to every person in this community. And I would just like to read some of the things that fluoridation causes, and especially fluoridation mixed with aluminum, which we have, we get aluminum from everything practically. You mix fluoride with it, you have problems with Alzheimer's, which is expanding greatly, as we all know, Parkinson's disease, Lou Gehrig's disease, ADD, ADHD, dyslexia, developmental brain disorders. It accumulates in your pineal gland, which basically causes kids to come into puberty much earlier. It also regulates our sleep, it protects the brain from damage from free radicals, and the main destructive reaction seen in all degenerative brain disorders. And in babies, another study that was done, that were aborted, babies five to eight months of age, gestation, eight months, five to eight months gestation, they found that their brain cells were grossly abnormal, the nerve fibers were not even compatible with typical human nerve fibers. These kids were in obviously fluoridated areas. They were grossly abnormal, and the nerve fibers were misplaced and swollen when they did autopsies on these babies. The fluoride levels that are set by the EPA are supposedly safe, and the maximum, they say, is for the late-quit ones, I don't know what the things are, but anyway, what I'm saying is basically, we need to get this out of our water, because it's causing great, great medical problems for a lot of people, and for all of us. It causes cancer, osteoporosis, hypothyroidism and goiters, male infertility, tooth fluorosis, it does not save kids from getting tooth decay. As a matter of fact, they have found that children that live in non-fluoridated water have better teeth than people who live in fluoridated areas. Now, in October of 2010, the UN declared access to clean water a human right, and I think it is my human right not to be medicated with fluoride when I don't want to be. Now.
Excuse me, we do try to limit to about three minutes.
All right.
The council actually discussed this very issue, what, three months ago, maybe, sometime in the last three to six months, and came to a conclusion that we weren't going to take action at this time.
And why, why would that be?
I think various councillors had various reasons for that. Counselor Milligan was a strong advocate for removing the fluoride, and as I say, there was a wide-ranging discussion, you might look into council minutes and see what you see there. We might pursue having a slight, you know, have some additional conversation about it, I suppose, but at this point, council is not in favor of removing the fluoride.
What can I do about that?
We actually didn't make a decision on whether to remove it or not.
Okay.
We made a decision to postpone, a decision until more information was put before council, and I'm currently working on putting a citizen group together to make a presentation to the council, this, that's, the group is going to be some physicians, some parapactors, some parents, some other concerned citizens, with facts.
Thanks, Steve, I think that was one of the.
You'll be.
I would love to be.
More than welcome to chat with me after the council meeting.
Yeah, I think that was the one night I was at some last, a little while, so, thanks.
Well, how does one, I know I have to give up my time, but how does one get a petition started, then? I'll educate the public.
We'll talk after the council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. And I always hate to cut anybody off, but I think council is telling me I really do, but we do have a lot on the agenda tonight, and need to go ahead and get moving, this and things. So with that, I will turn to our auditor, and ask him to tell us about what's up with the other this year.
And you'll just take one and pass it down.
Sure.
What's your, what you're getting is the view from the mountaintop on the city's finances. I've extracted four pieces of data from not only this year's audit, but the previous two years as well. You'll see all smiley faces there, and so if you, you know, accountants are such fascinating speakers, if you want to take a little nap, and all you want to know is what's the gist of what I'm going to say, you can look at the smiley faces and basically have what I have to say. Basically, I'm looking at the city of Monmouth from the perspective of an outsider, based on the financial information, what would I look at, and what conclusions would I draw from that information? So the first one says, how do our rainy day funds look? The concept here is if on July 1st, all the money stopped coming in, how long could you run the city before you ran out of money? And the benchmark there is six months, and you figure if you have at least six months reserve on hand, you ought to be able to weather any ups and downs, any surprises that come along, you should have enough financial resiliency to do well. You'll see that over the past three years, the, that number has been increasing from eight now to 13, and so that's basically a good sign, it means the city is in good financial condition. The second, the second one says, are we going further into debt, or are we getting out of debt? And the concept here is flawed, but I will explain what happens. The theory is, it's always nice to get out of debt, and you get a smiley face if you get out of debt. The converse is, if you go into debt, you get a frowny face, and everyone thinks, yeah, but if we didn't go into debt, we would never have new electric substations, we would never have any improvements for our wastewater treatment plant, and so it's flawed in the sense that going into debt is not a bad thing, when it's done for an appropriate purpose. The concept for the frowny face is you are obligating future generations to pay for it, and so even though it's not a bad thing, there has to be a, there has to be a frowny face for every smiley face, and so that's, that's why I say it's a little bit of a flawed icon, but the concept is, the city is getting out of debt, and those are in thousands of dollars. I mean, it's not $1,466 that you got out of debt, it's $1,466,000. The next.
So that's how much less debt we have now than we had last year?
That's correct.
Even though we pulled it past a new bond for the police station.
Yes.
That was after.
Because, yeah, yeah.
Does that count, because we haven't sold them yet, so next year it'll go.
Okay. The next, the next one is a little bit difficult to explain. The concept is, the city has two basic functions, one is a business-like function where you charge customers for services, that's the Water Sewer and Power and Light Fund, and a governmental function where you provide services to citizens. The idea is that the business-type activities, charge customers, to be an ongoing activity, you charge customers what you need in order to keep in business. On the governmental side, the theory is that in the long run, overall, on a long period of time, the people who receive the services ought to pay for them. And that means that the city with the available resources ought to provide the level of service that they can. You shouldn't, you shouldn't charge one year's taxpayers more than is necessary so that you can do something in the subsequent year, and vice versa. You shouldn't necessarily stockpile money just because you want to sit on a hoard of cash, it means that those people are overpaying. So the concept is, in the long run, overall, the expenditures, the spending that the city does ought to come plus or minus 5 percent of the revenues that come in. That means everybody is basically paying their fair share as you go. If you look at those statistics, you'll say, not one of them is within that range, everyone is the outside end. How do we get a smiley face out of that? And the, well, there's two reasons. One is because I can be arbitrary and capricious when I assign icons, and the other is that if you take a look at the three years as a whole, the plus 8, the plus 6, and the minus 15, it just about nets to zero. And so over a three-year period, there's some timing differences, but overall, for the last three years, basically, everyone has gotten what they've paid for, no one has paid, no one has been charged more than what they really ought to have been charged, I guess is a way to say that. The last one, will our revenue bond investors be pleased with our ability to pay them over time? People who buy municipal bonds are remarkably intolerant when it comes to having their payments late, and they always like to be paid, and they like to know that you have enough money to make those payments so they can sleep at night. And what they want is the cash flow from operations, from the Water Sewer and Power and Light, to be, before the debt payments are made, at least twice as much as you need, so that they're sure to get their payments, and you have enough left over to absorb. absorb surprises. And surprises in utility funds usually come with three zeros at the end, and so they like to make sure that there's plenty of, plenty of margin there in case things happen. Uh, as you can see, the, the ratios there are well in excess of twice, and so the conclusion that someone would draw is, here's a city that overall is in good financial shape, able to pay your bills as they come due, over a three-year period have basically charged their citizens the cost of government and have not disadvantaged any one particular year to such an extent that someone would have a burr under their saddle and say those jerks down at City Hall don't know what they're doing. Basically, uh, this sheet says the jerks at City Hall do know what they're doing. And, uh, that, that's the view from the top of the mountain, and, uh, as always, if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them, and, uh, even if you have questions other than this evening, Mark has our phone number, and I'm, uh, we view ourselves as a resource to the city. If you have things that you wanna discuss, uh, give me a call, I'm always glad to, to just to talk about whatever you wanna talk about. Mark, did it, can I say anything? Okay.
So, let's see, well, first of all, I'd like to ask, any councillors have any questions to tell on this, this year?
No comments, just the, or questions, just the comment about, um, the findings or notices that we had. The last year, we had a few things that we changed some policies and procedures, and looks like all of the things you pointed out got corrected.
Yeah, we, yeah, I, I, well, Mount Nater would really be frustrated this year with the city, there's just no graft and corruption to find, and so, uh, makes for a really boring audit, but basically what you want is a really boring audit.
So, so the staff report notes that it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion accepting the audit report from Grover Mule and Swank. I would be in a hate, such a market.
I would move that we accept the audit report as presented this evening?
Second?
Moved in second and in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? I think we will accept that one. And you can just state it there.
I know two other finance directors.
It's pretty funny.
The two public finance directors.
Right, right. Okay, so, um...
Who actually know how to read this thing.
Right.
What were you trying to say?
So, we do have an executive session tonight. Um, I would first ask if there are any council comments this evening. And hearing none, I will turn to the script for the executive session, which reads as follows, "The city council will now meet in the executive session for the purpose of discussing performance evaluation of public officers and employees. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602I, Performance Evaluation of Public Officers and Employees, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff or other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room." Not now. "Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room, and it is not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning from the executive session." What I would now do is ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting to, until after the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and it will, we will, uh, come back together and work session at that point, so, a motion to adjourn until after Urban Renewal.
I move to adjourn our regular meeting until, to be resumed shortly.
And seconded?
Seconded.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, I will turn to the Urban Renewal Agency agenda and remind everybody that there are no longer councillors in there, but, uh, Mr. Mills, and I will, uh, call the order of the Tuesday, January twenty-first meeting of the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency, and ask those for a roll call, please.
Mr. Carey is excused. Ms. Coons, here. Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Milligan?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Silvernagle?
Here.
Mr. Oberst?
Here. Any citizen comments on Urban Renewal Agency items? And seeing none, we have a consent calendar that consists of the minutes from the last Urban Renewal Agency meeting, which was September seventeenth of 2013, and I can have a motion to approve.
And we approve the minutes as presented.
Second?
Seconded.
Steve gets this one. Moved in seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, I'll turn to the business agenda, which happens to be an audit presentation from Tom Gogel, Grover Mule and Swank.
Okay. And here is page two, and, uh, of course, the first thing you're gonna look at is the icon, and you'll say, whoa, how did we get three frowny faces when we just had four smiley faces? And that's, uh, that's what I want to explain to you. Let me just preface my comments by saying, a smiley face doesn't mean everything is fine, and a frowny face doesn't mean there's problems. The idea of, of those is to spark your thinking, to get you, um, I'll, I'll say, evaluating the actions of the Urban Renewal Agency as an outsider might view them. And the, the net result of what I want to say is, an outsider looking at the Urban Renewal Agency would probably say, gee, I hope those folks know what they're doing. There are some, uh, some, and, and I'm not trying to imply that you don't. I'm saying that an outsider would take a look at what happened and say, this is atypical. This is not what I would expect to see in an Urban Renewal Agency. So let's, uh, I have just three items here. The first one says, how do our rainy day funds look? And again, the same measurement, six months, is the benchmark. If you look at 2013, the number is zero, okay? And generally speaking, someone would say, you ran out of money. And, uh, if you take a look at the Urban Renewal Financial Statements, that is true. There is, uh, there's actually a negative four thousand dollars or something like that. The general concept is, if you're in the hole, did you know that you were gonna do that? Did you plan on that? And how are you gonna get out? So, I understand that you thought that through, and you know the answer to those, I'm just saying, someone looking at it from the outside would ask that. The next one, are we getting out of debt or going further in? Previous year, no debt. At the end of June 2013, uh, these are not in thousands, these are actual dollars, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in debt. Again, no surprise, but someone would say, gee, you ran out of money and you're over two hundred thousand dollars in debt, I hope those people knew what they were doing. And the last one that says, uh, who paid for this year's services, current year recipients or prior years? And you'll see, basically what this is telling you, in the previous year, money was saved up in anticipation of a project. In the current year, not only that money was spent, but more. And basically, this is the, the downtown streetscape project, and everyone understands that that's what happened. But someone looking from the outside, who didn't have the rest of the story, would take a look at these numbers and say, those are very unusual numbers, uh, to be seeing in a municipality. But because you know the facts behind the story, it's not a cause for concern. That's why I say a frowny face doesn't mean there's a problem, it just means that these are not what someone would normally expect to see in a municipal audit report. Does that, Mark, what am I missing there?
The only thing I would mention on the negative number is, if you look at it from a budgetary basis, which is how we draw budgets, it would be negative. But when you, you roll that to, uh, into GAAP financials, then it becomes a negative number, so, um, so, that's all I got.
And the, and the other mitigating factor, the debt was owed to the city, which is different from, say, Columbia Bank.
It's nice when you can borrow from yourself. Um, you tend to get good interest rates. So, when, or, the thing that sort of hangs here for me, Tom, when we first went into the notion of Urban Renewal Agency, one of the things I very clearly remember hearing said over and over again was, one of the functions of an Urban Renewal Agency is to take on debt. And so, just, you know, can you, can you help, uh, wrap your concern around, or, you know, the outsider's concern around there being debt, contrast it with the statement that the function of the Urban Renewal Agency is to take on debt?
Yes, that's right. Actually, the, let me clarify that a little bit. The function of the Urban Renewal Agency is to, um, to create, to achieve urban renewal.
Right.
And they, they can do that through the, through incurring debt to make those expenses. What has happened is, the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency has chosen a project, has invested money in it, and until, I will say, conceptually speaking, until that debt is repaid, there's not additional projects that the agency can undertake. In other words, they have spent, made a decision, we're gonna invest heavily in this project. Now, in order to do another project, we'd have to sort of get back to our starting place and figure out, are we going to save up money and then spend it, or are we going to incur debt, get the money, make the expenditures, and then repay it in the future? So it's, it's a, I'll say, a fiscal philosophy. One is, it, I, it's, I guess it's equivalent to buying a car. You either save up enough money, go to the dealer and pay cash, or you have a hundred dollars in your pocket, go to the dealer, buy the car, and get a loan at the credit union. And in, in both situations, you still obtain a car, it's just when do you set aside the money to pay for it? Do you set aside ahead of time, or do you set it aside afterwards? And so the, the, what the Urban Renewal Agency has done in the past is to save up the money ahead of time, buy not only the car, but some accessories to go with it, and, oh, now we gotta pay for the mortgage before we do something else. Unless you adopt a different philosophy, which says, we have an urgency to do this project, we will borrow money now and pay it back in the future. It's a, it's a, it's a, I'll say, a council decision based on your fiscal philosophy. Does that clarify things?
It does. I'm, I'm, I, I think where I am is, if in fact you take on debt and you have revenues, you plan ahead far enough to know what your payments on that debt are gonna be, and you have revenue sufficient over, that you know over the next few years you're gonna be able to pay that debt, plus, you should be able to use that plus to take on perhaps another debt, as long as you know that you have, your payments do not exceed your projected income, and unless the bottom falls out of the real estate market completely, we should be in pretty good shape on revenue, so.
Yes, that's...
That's, that's...
That is, that's exactly correct, and that's why I say there's limitations on the, if, if you look at a frowny face and you think there's a problem, no, a frowny face means, did we know what we were doing, is that the right decision that we wanted to make? And like I said, a frowny face, you get a frowny face if you go into debt, it doesn't mean it was a bad decision, it just means there is an out, there is now an obligation that future years have to retire that debt, and it means that you have, um, I'll say, used your option to invest in a particular project. As you're paying back that debt, if other opportunities come along, you may not be able to take advantage of them because you made a decision now. That's not a bad thing, it's just true.
Okay.
And the converse is also true. If you choose not to spend money now, as opportunities come along, you will be able, more able, I'll say, to take, to take advantage of those.
Okay.
Well, I would say one thing that we want to take into account is the urban renewal revenue of how it's generated, which is in the increment of, as things are developed in the, in, in the district, uh, and what those revenues, what their projections are, and then trying to match up those revenues and future revenues with potentially debt now versus debt later. So I think that's one of the things that, that we have our staff and, and we keep well aware of is, is what are those trends look like, and trying to, you know, bigger projecting, a little bang for the buck, but also understand that we added, uh, the agency's revenues grew by fifty or sixty thousand last year, I think, and, and certainly as we give certain incentives to get certain projects done in the district, that might generate money to the district to pay that back in a very short period of time. The apartment buildings, I believe we, we got that back in, in what, a year?
Oh, less than, actually.
Less than a year. So certainly, sometimes expenditures come back in, in revenue increment, which is not common thinking in accounting, but certainly it's, it's how the increment of, of revenues works.
Yes, that's, that's a fact, I, the Urban Renewal Agency is a, it's run differently than the city. The revenue sources are different, the types of money that is spent is different, and so you have to, you have to kind of take off your city councillor hat and put on your Urban Renewal District hat when you're thinking about how, you know, what kind of decisions are we gonna make? Are we gonna incur debt? Are we gonna refrain from incurring debt? It's, it, like you said, it's, it's a different animal.
Cash flow being key, I think, in that case.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, any other questions for Tom around the renewal?
I moved towards the audit of the annual financial report of the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of 2013.
Second?
Moved in second, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, um, that brings us to the end of our, uh, business agenda, and I would ask for a, a motion to adjourn Urban Renewal to, back to council work session. Someone in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will take five minutes and get...